Good morning. It's April 16th, 2019. I'm calling to order the meeting with Story County Board of Supervisors. And I would ask you, if you would like to, please join us in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we have public comment number one. And if anybody here is interested in addressing topics on today's agenda, please come forward. Seeing nobody move to the podium, I'll close public forum. And the next item is organization of the board, election of a vice chair for the remainder of calendar year 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that Rick Sanders, that we appoint Rick Sanders as vice chair.
I will second that motion. Any discussion?
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you. Next is consideration of proclamation for April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Tess Cody is here with access. Would you like to make any comments?
I would.
Okay.
Remind me how this goes. Do you read the bottom part and I read the top?
You can do it however Linda Merkin wants to do it. We put chairs while we're on chairs.
I missed so many things. Linda, do I read the top part?
Why don't you start with the top part and then I'll take over it now therefore.
Perfect. Thank you Linda. All right. So Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Recognizing this issue and month raises public awareness about sexual violence, support for survivor services, and educates communities on how to prevent it. Whereas rape, sexual assaults, and sexual harassment harm our community and statistics show one in five women and one in 67 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before age 18. Whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. The need for awareness raising and prevention are clear. This year, the month's theme is "I Ask," which champions the power of asking for consent, whether it be asking to hold someone's hand for permission to share personal information with others, or if a partner is interested in sex. Consent is clear, concrete example of what it takes to end sexual harassment, abuse, and assault. This April, we aim to empower everyone to put consent into practice. "I Ask" is the statement by which individuals will demonstrate that asking for consent is healthy, normal, and a necessary part of everyday interactions.
Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and each day of the year as an opportunity to create change for the future. We, the Story County Board of Supervisors, join communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. The proclamation is adopted. Thank you very much for bringing it to us.
Thank Tess.
And everything that you did.
Did we want a photo with this one?
Did we get a photo with you last time? We did not, did we?
I don't remember, but I do have a board member here, so we would love a photo.
Okay, just do it. Moving on to agency reports. And is it Rochelle Florrie?
Rochelle.
Hi.
Hi.
Rochelle is here from ChildServe.
Good morning. Good morning. Good for having me.
Thanks for being here.
So my name is Rochelle Florrie, and I am the Ames Program Manager for ChildServe. We recently appointed a director for the Ames location. Her name is Kate Reynolds. So you will probably be seeing more information about Kate. We are enthusiastic and very excited to have someone locally as a director for our Ames location. So that's something new. Our mission at ChildServe is to help families with special healthcare needs live a great life. And our vision is to be uniquely positioned in Iowa to improve the health and well-being of children with special healthcare needs. Three things that we have done so far is Iowa, we are Iowa's largest pediatric rehabilitation provider. We currently have 116 occupational, physical, and speech therapists. 16 of those are housed in our Ames location. We have locations throughout Iowa, Ames, the Des Moines area, as well as Iowa City. We are also Iowa's only CARF-accredited rehab program with specialties in pediatrics and brain injury. And we are physician-led by Iowa's only board-certified pediatric physiatrist. Sorry. It's the only one, so it's a difficult, unique, I guess, position. We are governed by a board of trustees and a board of directors out of our Des Moines location, but we do have an Ames Community Advisory Board that meets bi-monthly to give feedback on community engagement and program needs. And I've listed those in the document that I sent those people. The childcare center here in Ames has a five-star rating on the Iowa Quality Rating Scale for childcare centers. And all of the other programs at our Ames location are CARF-accredited. If you don't know what that stands for, it's the Commission of Accreditation of Rehabilitation I also shared a handout of our different programs throughout the Ames location only. Thought I would discuss funding for those. So our childcare is funded by asset, which you provide a chunk of money to help those families get that childcare assistance that they need. We also accept DHS childcare assistance, and the rest of the childcare is private-paid by the families. Our outpatient therapy and adaptive equipment program is private insurance. They can private-pay or use their Medicaid for those services. Respite and supportive community living are also asset-funded with the Central Iowa Community Services. We also receive funds from children at home. The Ark of Story County funds, we allow families to private-pay or we accept Medicaid for respite and supportive community living. The newest programs to our organization are Day Rehabilitation, Medical Day Health, and our Autism Day Health. Those can either be privately paid, or again, we accept Medicaid for those services as well. We are currently serving 611 children throughout the Ames location, which is an increase of about 60 additional children from last year. And as you can see, I provided you guys with a breakdown of age, and over 500 of those 600 are children under the age of 12. So huge pediatric population. I also gave you a breakdown of the number of services that those children use from our organization. As far as satisfaction, we provide satisfaction surveys to our staff and our families quarterly. We have very highly engaged employees and highly satisfied families, 90% are mission-driven staff, and 92% of family satisfaction is what we're currently seeing. I just have a few highlights over the year, things that we've updated or changed. Like I've already said, we've seen 10% of the overall growth in our Ames location, and we continue to see that year after year. We discharge a lot of children yearly as well. So as many as we're discharging, we're having them come in and a little bit more. Therapy program is our largest program area that you're going to see children discharging. We have been serving the community for the past 24 years, which we are very proud of. We just recently are very close to finishing a $300,000 playground renovation project, thanks to many generous donors throughout Story County. We have also completed a flooring update for all of our childcare classrooms. We have seen a decrease in our childcare census, but only because we have gained two new specialized preschool programming to children with those high medical needs and children with autism. So we're serving just as many throughout that program, just in a different way, I guess is the best way to say that. We've implemented electronic medical records for our therapy and our childcare programs. So now I'm proud to say the whole center is fully have implemented electronic records. We hired a bilingual speech therapist this past year. We're seeing a big increase of Spanish-speaking residents. We also purchased a video conferencing system used exclusively for interpretation services in over 100 languages. Again, we see a lot of people that do not speak English, and so this system is used for enrollment as well as assessing the child to start services. We've been awarded several grants this past year and purchased needed equipment to begin concussion therapy to the Ames community in Story County.
Thank you very much. Board, do you have questions?
I do, about your $300,000 playground renovation. With that renovation, do you anticipate that you'll be able to also use the Miracle League Playground?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. A lot of the renovation costs were due to drainage issues that we were having, and you know, we're 25 years old, and so our concrete was falling apart. So basically, we demolished all surfacing. The only thing we kept was our playground equipment. And then we redid all the drainage, new gutters, yeah, I mean, and then all-new surfacing. We put a lot more grass in. We also used the same surfacing that the Miracle League is hoping to construct the Porum Play, wonderful surfacing. We had it over the winter, seemed to do fine with the winter months, but a great improvement, especially for infants and toddlers, because when they fall, they're not getting scraped up as much, and they're falling on a cushioned surface. Very unique, and we love it so far. So here in May, the company, I think they come out of New York, they're coming back to us in May to finish the next two surface areas that we have to finish in order to completely open up the playground to all the children.
Okay, good. I'm happy to hear that. That still will be a complement?
Oh, yeah. We will definitely use it. We'll have kids on the ball team. Yeah, we do a lot of community outings and just try to get the children involved in the community as much as we can. And so we would not just use ours, we would definitely use community. We've got a lot of children to do that with.
Thank you. We hear a lot about waiting lists and availability of childcare throughout the county. How are you doing in terms of waits to serve children?
Infant is our waitlist. And I would say we're probably a year out of waitlist. You have to wait a year to get that infant care that you need. Our childcare center is currently pretty much full. Our openings are in our twos and three-year-old classroom, and it's not our infants. That's where the waitlists happen, because they're waiting for that spot to open up. Every fall, we lose a lot of kindergarteners, and that's usually where our openings are, because we plan for all those infants and shuffling them through. So.
Do you have any plans for increasing your capacity?
Well, kind of our plans, because of our mission, is to really expand those services with kids with special healthcare needs, and that's why we increased, you know, we're serving almost 20 children that have medical needs that are going to be entering into kindergarten as well. So again, that's childcare services, it's just a different population. And we currently have nine in our autism classroom, which five of those will be leaving to go to kindergarten in the fall as well. So, you know, I guess we feel like we're doing our part by adding these extra specialty services for the families that also need childcare. They're full-time workers as well, and trying to find that specialty childcare. But I think we will expand, we'll continue, you know, right now we're out of space, I can tell you that. We are looking to, you know, do a huge campaign to be able to add on to the building. We're using every little bit of space we can, and we've also discussed moving office individuals out of the building to provide more, you know, space within. So I hope that helps.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next we have consideration of minutes of April 9th. Consider a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments? Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. Minutes approved. Okay, consideration of personnel actions.
I'll move as presented.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda approved. We have no public hearing items, so we'll move on to additional items. Item one is discussion and consideration of Resolution 19-97 for the Support of the Story County Housing Trust Fund for Fisk Years 2019 to 2020. And we have someone moving to the podium?
I am Hope Matheny. I am one of the board members of the Story County Housing Trust. And so I have come to you today with two documents. The first document is kind of what the Story County Housing Trust Fund has done with its first two years of existence. As you know, we're a new 501(c)(3), and so we did get funding from the Board of Supervisors two years ago. And so we are coming today with a new resolution and just kind of updating you on what we've done, what we plan to do, and how we are using the money. This is a, this is a special kind of grant that we have been given. The match for it through the State of Iowa Finance Authority is only a 25% match. So that means all of the counties and all of the places that we get to donate to us, it can match $1 to $4, and bring all of those dollars back into our community, which is amazing. So for our first couple of years, we have been deciding what we, of course, want to do with all of these funds that we have now brought in to the community. Of course, getting running, we have now offered a few services, and we have a NOFA out right now for rental assistance that will be being voted on next month, so we can start with rental assistance too. And this is county-wide, not just city of Ames. So that's what, one of the things that makes this really unique, is we're spreading our dollars throughout the entire community and not just the city of Ames, as so many things seem to focus on. So we come to you today with our resolution. Did you want me to read it?
I don't know that we need to.
Okay, perfect.
It's been on our website.
Oh, great.
Okay. Loris, do you have some questions or something you'd like to add?
Some comments to add. I'm now officially on the board, who's taking care of that, the Housing Trust Fund Board. And I'd just like to point out that I've been very impressed with this inaugural board and the decision they made to start with owner occupied, because we forget sometimes that we've got people in our communities who, because of either changing financial circumstances or they've gone to a fixed income, just, they are finding it more difficult to stay in their homes because of a repair standpoint. And that's an important group. And so for the Story County Housing Trust Fund to have used the first amount of money to approach that problem was a good introduction into some of the communities. This rental assistance program that now we've got requests out for will, I think, will be a backbone of assistance in the county for probably decades to come. And how that will be structured moving forward, don't know. It will be up to the individual agencies who'll be coming in to take a look at that. You'll notice, or what you're being asked, we're being asked for today is up to $10,000. And we budgeted $9,000 and some odd dollars for fiscal year 19, and then we've just approved in our budget, the same $9,000 and some odd dollars for fiscal year 20. When originally, the Board of Supervisors looked at this and contributing money to the Story County Housing Trust Fund, the Board of Supervisors sitting then decided that they would go ahead and pay the dollar per person or per capita match for the small communities. Depending on how you count out two years, whether it be the two years of funding, which we're discussing now, or it was the two years of approval back in 2017 when the original resolution was passed, the hope was that we could approach the small communities and have them begin to pay for their dollar per capita match. With everything going on with the Story County Housing Trust Fund and the administration involved, the reach-out was not done in time for the small communities to be asked if they could include this in their fiscal year 20 budget. And so what we have in front of us is for the resolution showing that we would pick up the smaller communities per dollar match here for fiscal year 20. We've got 19 and 20 in this resolution. And we're hoping that the board would work with the Story County Housing Trust Fund so that this year, the Housing Trust Fund people could go out and talk to the communities in the fall when they begin talking about their fiscal year 21 budgets, to see if those communities would begin to participate and put in money themselves and to substitute that. So that's the only change from when the discussion was originally held in 2017.
And I have a couple of questions, but first, Rick, do you have any questions?
No, I think I'll have something to say, but I'll wait till after you ask your questions.
Okay. So is it up to $10,000, or is it $10,000 for each year?
Up to.
Up to.
Or you can, of course, always donate $10,000 if you felt so inclined. However, it's up to.
We approved the $9,067, or whatever the dollar amount was at that time.
Which is what we did for the previous fiscal years.
Correct.
And that included the small communities?
Yes.
That covered the small communities?
Yes, any community under 2,000.
Okay, and this resolution says this up to $10,000 is the prorated sum for all unincorporated residents of Story County. Should it also include N-residents for communities under 2,000?
Yes, and that would be the motion we would look at adding.
We could consider adding that then.
Yeah, so when we originally approved this, we approved just doing the unincorporated citizens. I want to say that that was somewhere in the $4,600 range. Then when it became apparent that we were going to struggle to get commitments in time from our smaller communities, where several hundred dollars is a big, big deal, the board then, I think rightly, stepped up and said, no, we'll go ahead and assume it. And let's just be clear, we throw these numbers around, we're talking about every city except for Ames, Nevada, Huxley, Story City, who all have their own skin in the game. I believe this is the right thing for the board to do in perpetuity. Now, I like the idea of each of our small towns having a little skin in the game, but I would fully recognize that that is a little, it's a little more labor-intensive for the dollars that you actually get back to have to do that. And so I would encourage this board to just feel like that this is part of Story County's skin in the game, that, so that we don't have the Housing Trust Fund Board chasing its tail somewhat in trying to chase down every one of our smaller communities, that we assume that role. We count on partners in Nevada, Huxley, Story City, and Ames to continue to assume their role, and we try to have a Housing Trust Fund Board that is not only off to a great start, but really becomes something substantial. I believe this is one way we can help. I would encourage us just to start budgeting the $10,000 and recognizing, Linda, that this applies to all unincorporated residents and those residents of every town except for the four I've mentioned.
So you're talking, this resolution we have in front of us is 19 and 20?
And that's all we can do today. I'm talking longer term, that I believe this is the right thing for Story County to do.
Well, I think it would be good to have some discussion about that at a later date, because if, you know, otherwise than the Housing Trust Fund, I think it's good to go out to the communities and talk about the services, and you might find that some of them are willing. But I do understand and agree that a few hundred dollars out of a budget for a very small city is hard.
And we are hopeful, the more we get going, some of these smaller communities might actually use the funds, and then they will see the importance of it, have the buy-in. Once you get one person to do the owner occupied in their small community, and word gets around, it might be something all the communities under 2,000 people really get to buy into and realize it's not something just for Ames, as so many of our funding sources are. So we're hoping over time it'll really buy into everywhere in our county.
I'd like to add, I've already been, it's already been suggested to me by a couple of other members of the Trust Fund Board, that Story County look at maybe an increase in funding going down the road. If you look at trust funds in Iowa, most of them, the county is actually the largest governmental funder. We're flipped here right now because of the Ames is putting in more money, but that's discussions for the future. I'm just letting you know that that's, I received my first request for fiscal year 21. Okay? So increase, yes.
So, but let's just underscore what the purpose of these funds, the intention of these funds was to be able to leverage the grant from IFA, right?
Correct.
Eventually, you can see a scenario, as the Housing Trust Board gets going, that we're going to be doing more than just trying to leverage funds with the dollars we're putting in. That's a separate discussion. Right now, I'm talking about as long as those funds are available from IFA, we would be silly, I think, we would be silly if we didn't do our part to make sure that we can access all the available dollars. Now, every other discussion, over and above leveraging those dollars, that's a different discussion, and that needs to be had in every small town with, here at the board table.
Correct.
But it's two separate discussions.
So I would see if we're ready for a motion, if there's probably one thing that needs to be added in. Well, first, if we're comfortable with the $10,000. And second is, in the last resolution, the language was "And all Story County municipalities added below a population level of 2,000 citizens." So I would suggest if somebody's making a motion, to consider that.
I would make the motion to add that language and all... If you look at trust funds in Iowa, most of them, the county is actually the largest governmental funder. We're flipped here right now because of the Ames is putting in more money, but that's discussions for the future. I'm just letting you, letting you know that that's, I received my first request for fiscal year 21. Okay? So increase, yes.
So, and, but let's just underscore what the purpose of these funds, the intention of these funds was to be able to leverage the grant from IFA, right?
Correct.
Eventually, you can see a scenario as the Housing Trust Fund Board gets going that we're going to be doing more than just trying to leverage funds with the dollars we're putting in. That's a separate discussion. Right now, I'm talking about as long as those funds are available from IFA, we would be silly, I think, we would be silly if we didn't do our part to make sure that we can access all the available dollars. Now, every other discussion, over and above leveraging those dollars, that's a different discussion and that needs to be had in every small town with, here at the board table.
Correct.
But it's two separate discussions.
So I would see if we're ready for a motion, if there's probably one thing that needs to be added in. Well, first, if we're comfortable with the $10,000. And second is in the last resolution, the language was and all Story County municipalities added below a population level of 2,000 citizens. So I would suggest if somebody's making a motion, consider that.
I would make the motion to add that language and also to delete the up to and just put a straight $10,000. I think we can find the $900 that was budgeted, the budget difference in our, so that we just go straight $10,000 if I'm comfortable.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we add the language regarding the municipality center 2,000 citizens and strike the up to in front of the amount $10,000. Any further discussion?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you guys so much today.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming home.
Thanks for all your work. Okay. Next is discussion and consideration of U.S. Census Complete Count Committees.
Nope.
No, oh, unfair, sorry. Discussion and consideration proposal to use taxpayer dollars along with forfeited funds to cover maintenance and fuel costs of the Story County Sheriff's Office MRAP effective immediately. Sheriff Fitzgerald and Captain Lenny.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. We come before you today to update based on an agreement that we've had with the Board of Supervisors upon acquiring a piece of equipment. The piece of equipment that I'm talking about, we began working for it, I think, around 2013 and we finally acquired it from the federal government, I think it was around 2014. And the vehicle I'm talking about is called an MRAP. Let's see, a mind resistant ambush proof vehicle. And as we started out with this in 2014, it was kind of a new item that we had in our toolkit to use to enhance safety for the officers and the public as well. And when we'd done this, the agreement was that all support costs for maintaining the MRAP would be from the forfeiture fund that we have within the sheriff's office. Well, we see the forfeiture fund somewhat dwindling a little bit and within the forfeiture fund, there's other areas that have been earmarked such as donations given to the dive team and the automated external distributors that we're trying to get in the squad cars. So it's not a full amount that we have in the forfeiture fund that we can utilize. So what we would like to do now, that we've had this vehicle for some years now, combined with the fact that we're all seeing across the nation what has happened as an attack on the country and an attack on law enforcement at times. This being a vehicle, again, to enhance safety, I ask that board modify our agreement that we have and move this to 50/50. We'll still use 50% of the cost for maintenance and fuel that would come out of the forfeiture fund and I would ask that the other 50% be able to utilize tax dollars to continue the upkeep.
May I go first? Yep. So since I'm the one holdover from the board back when we had those original discussions, let me just say that anything that causes me to go back and remember our dear friend Paul Too is, it's a welcome chance. Almost everybody here knew Paul. He was phenomenal and he was never better than he was in this conversation. I think his background in law enforcement helped us through this conversation. And the reality, Linda and Loris, that I'd like to point out to you is, we as a board, that board, did not know exactly what we were getting, exactly what it was going to be used for. Sheriff, I think it's fair to say that you at that point, you knew it was a piece of equipment that you could use, but you didn't know day to day exactly how useful it was going to be and how it was going to be used. And so we at that time, led by Paul Too, were reticent to spend taxpayer funding on something that frankly, we didn't really understand at that point. Well, now we've got five good years of really understanding how the sheriff is going to use, choose to deploy this thing and use it. We know more about what its value is or potential value to Story County. I think this is a completely appropriate request. I think if Paul Too were still sitting here with us today, he would think it was an appropriate request. We know so much more today than we did back when we made that decision. And I'm appreciative that you're talking about a 50/50 split. I know there's some updates to the equipment on the, on the MRAP that you, that you've got to do. And, and I just appreciate the way you've handled this and the way you're using all your equipment. I would encourage us to pass this.
I understand the difference also. I remember sitting out in the audience when this was discussed and there was some, some concern in the community and on social media especially about what kind of image, what kind of message was being sent. But I think that the citizens can see in the last five years that this has not, I don't consider there's been a misuse of it and, and now that there will be some changes in, in it, its use and the department can see the safety value of it in certain situations, I think that it is appropriate that some tax dollars be used to help maintain it and pay for the gas and make sure of its availability. So I'm, I'm favorable and if, I'd make the motion unless there's some other...
Well, I'd just like to make some comments first.
Okay, sure.
A bill that we've been following, House Study Bill 165, is now passed the House Ways and Means Committee as House File 773. It would severely limit the amount of money that counties can levy in property taxes. The fact that it is proceeding and that there have been many opinions in the Duane Register in favor of that, give me pause in terms of adding something else onto our general fund right now. The previous board did, did find a funding source. I know that it's got nearly as much money as you're, you're looking at right now to make some improvements to that vehicle. I'm also cognizant that there has been some public money put into, into acquiring that vehicle before the, before the funding source was found that would not be general fund. I'm not as, I know it's been brought out three times, talked about, Captain Lenny and I talked about that yesterday. I'm not sure that I see in the years that, that it's been aired that, and we all know that something can happen where we would need a vehicle like this. I'm just looking at what the likelihood would be versus the cost and bringing this into our county operating budget and I have concerns when there is another funding source available. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of doing that at this time and particularly because where, where the news we're waiting on for the legislature.
I, I'm having a flashback to the day that I got the call about the situation in Maxwell. And when was that, 2017 with, obviously I hadn't been a supervisor very long and, and to get that call as a, as someone who is responsible in a way for our employees and for our citizens and to hear that that man was in that home with the guns and had his, I believe, sister with him, it was frightening in a way that I've never been frightened for all the years that I have in various communities covered armed standoffs, you know, and stuff. And I, I worried. I worried very much about all of the people and the officers involved. And so I was grateful that there was a, there were tools available to help the officers. I do understand what you're saying, Linda. The House File 165, now 773 Senate File, has given me plenty of nervous moments. I do also know that if, if we end up with that and we end up having to take a very serious look at our budget all the way through, you know, in future years, I don't want to be setting limits on safety for, for our officers and for our staff and for the public. So I hear what you're saying. This is at least now not where I want to draw that line.
I would just point out, there's $27,800 approximately in the sheriff's forfeiture fund that has not, that is not, is not reserved for anything else. There's $983 for the dive team.
No, there's a, sorry. That full $27,000, that's the full amount that's in that fund, but there's portions of that that are dedicated for the dive team and for the AEDs. And so there's a lesser amount of it.
I said the $983 for the dive team. I didn't have an amount for the AEDs, so.
Okay.
What do you think there is in there then? Okay.
If I can, just, just a couple of thoughts. First of all, with where, where the state may be going on, on this idea of severely restricting local governments' ability to self-govern, which I think is ludicrous, but it's moving. But I think they've watered it down now to the point that I'm not nearly as concerned as I was even if it's implemented. But, but I think we should set that aside and decide something like this based on the merits. And now, Sheriff, I'm going to ask you this, but I'll, I'll tell you my view. My view is this does not really have, or does not necessarily have a budgetary implication. So since I've been here in 2010 and since long before that, you have always done a phenomenal job managing your budget. And in fact, I would be willing to bet that there's less than, if I said handful, I would have way too many fingers of years since you've been here, that you have not turned some dollars from your budget, your approved budget, back into the county every year. And what I would say in this is, right now, the sheriff can have extra dollars where he has done a great job managing his budget and he's got dollars left over. And every single year since I've been here, Sheriff, you've come forward and you've said, hey, I've got some extra dollars. Here's a couple of things that we need in our office that I'd like to use these dollars on, just notifying the board of that. Well within your right to do it. And I'm viewing, right now, you don't even have the ability to do that. You can have extra dollars in your budget, need to do something with the MRAP and not be able to because we've got this policy in place. Linda, I'm not viewing this as a budget, budgetary item. I'm viewing this as giving the sheriff the opportunity to manage his budget as he sees fit and utilize up to 50% of something that's needed from that out of your existing budget. Maybe there'd be a time that you'd want to come forward and actually request a budget amendment to do something. To me, that's a different conversation than just saying to you, this is a valuable piece of equipment. If you feel like something needs to be done and you can use 50% from your forfeiture fund and find another 50% in your budget, you should be allowed to do that as the elected sheriff. Thoughts on, on where I stand on this thing? Am I missing anything?
No, I, I do agree with what, what you're saying. You know, it's, you know, we've all reflected back to when the MRAP first came to Story County. And there were some concerns, you know, how, you know, viewed as a weapon of war. Well, some agencies went out and painted theirs black and painted theirs camouflage to look like that, but we chose the route of going out and painting ours like our squad cars are. So it has the same colors within the state and a few social media comments were made on it. But since then, that has turned around. And now what we're finding is we're getting requests from the public to whether it's going to Sam's Club for their day one day or down to Huxley this last weekend for when they had the program of Cops Against Cancer, when we've had requests from numerous places. It was even in the Story City Parade one day, a request of the citizenry coming up and wanting to see this. And what that does for us, it allows us to have an officer there and the public come by. Probably the biggest question they ask and most often ask is, what do you need this for? And so our staff is able to talk with the people there and they just walk around nodding their heads and it makes absolute sense. So I think the, whatever I have done in the sheriff's office in my 27 years, I've tried to enhance the safety for the officers and everything I do is designed to protect the county. And when we got this machine, the first thing we did, if we're going to use it, we're going to train in it. So our people have been to Omaha, to the military base there to train in the MRAP use. We've been down to Camp Dodge in Des Moines, to the MRAP training facility down there and they train with the military down there. So our people do know how to use this. And now that, with a public request and the public's knowledge that what we have is out there, it's not an offensive weapon that we're going to go out and use to crush in places and this, we're just want, it's a vehicle to provide safety. You look at other communities, when they have had active shooters, the larger communities, they come with a civilian model, which is called a Bearcat. And when I go to the sheriff's shows and law enforcement shows, vendors have the Bearcats there on display and you can't touch one for under $280,000. I've never made that request to the board. The cost of the MRAP, the sticker still on the door, is $750,000. So anyway, we have that to our community at no tax dollars except what we put in to maintain and to train with and to take to places around the county who ask us to come and display the vehicle.
Okay, so for clarity, the, the $28,000 that you're looking at right now, you're saying you take 14 of that out of the forfeiture fund and the other 14 out of your existing operating expenses?
Yes.
That you have that? Okay, so it's not an additional ask at this point. My, okay, my quick math here, it looks like at that point, we would have put total 41,000 of taxpayer dollars into the MRAP for the life of when we've had it and 17,000 in forfeiture funds. Does that sound about correct? Because I'm understanding there was 23,000 tax, general fund dollars in FY14 and another four in FY15.
I, I've looked at back in the records to see the receipts.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that we have put taxpayer dollars into the MRAP previous to when the policy was developed.
Yeah, so I mean, let's just be clear on that. We put some, some general fund dollars into the acquisition of it. You had to go pick it up. Feels like we had to get new tires for it when it was originally coming in and we had to pour a concrete pad because it was too heavy to sit on our, on our asphalt out there. But the, the arrangement that we made was all ongoing operations would be paid for out of the forfeiture funds, recognizing that anytime it was used as in an official capacity, we were going to revert back to taxpayer funding, whether it's general fund or rural fund or whatever fund it was going to come out of. And now the one change that we're talking about is the routine maintenance items like that, it would be appropriate for the sheriff to use up to 50% taxpayer funding to do that. Doesn't mean he has to, it just means right now he doesn't even have the ability to do it within his own office. And I think this is an appropriate request.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Yeah, I'll move that we, we approve this.
I'll second.
Okay. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thanks.
Okay. Now we will move on to the discussion and consideration of the U.S. Census Complete Count Committees. Time here now, Jerry, sorry about that earlier.
Hey, last week, John Cook with the U.S. Census, he's a partnership specialist, met with county staff and the board to talk about the, the program that we're here to talk about today, which is the Complete Count Committee. John talked about how it's important, our, the primary goal of the census is that everybody should be counted once, only once, and in the right place. And that's primarily for two different reasons. It has to do with where the actual district boundaries are drawn and the number of representatives that come from those boundaries at the state level. And the information from the census determines how much money of the pool of over $675 billion gets distributed throughout the country. By mid-March of 2020, people in the county, people in the state and throughout the country will be given three different opportunities to self-enumerate, which is the goal in all of this, getting people to respond on their own the first time. They'll have the opportunity to return mail, a form through the mail, they'll be able to use their phones. 12 different languages will be offered through the census websites to communicate this information and then through computer software through the internet. John talked a little bit about Rome, which is Response Outreach Area Mapper. It combines U.S. Census data with community... Census data with American Community Survey data, which provides a lot of different information by census track, including the income background, the origin of people. And it's very important in terms of this goal, which is to put together this committee to try to target people that, again, may be reluctant in participating in the census. Some folks potentially that the board could consider targeting would be renters, farmworkers, potentially veterans, young adults, university-age folks, 18 to 24, minorities or language-constrained persons, senior citizens, those that snowboard, locate in warm climates, and then come back in the summer. Emily put together this nifty map from the Rome data. This is of Story County. The darker the color represents the greatest increase in low-response rates. Most of those, the darkest colors really are within the city of Ames. It's my understanding that the city of Ames will have their own Complete Count Committee. But as you go to the south, 18.9%, and then when you get in the Huxley, Cambridge area, in the unincorporated area, it drops down to about 70%. But on average elsewhere, it's between 14 and 15% response rate. So again, you can use this data to try to target individuals who typically don't respond to the census. So these are the things that the board should discuss overall, you know, working with other organizations, other entities to put together a committee. The census suggests that you appoint a liaison, can be a citizen, elected official, a staff person. Our department was charged with working on the LUCA, which deals with the addressing of the dwellings in the unincorporated, and in certain cities, we helped with that information. The BAS was the boundary information, which we provided assistance on. They would like assistance in recruiting for positions at the census. They need people to do the field work that's involved, as well as office positions. They provided a packet at that meeting, and they've got some sample information to communicate to the outside world about positions that they're going to have available. We can certainly post those, if you'd like, on our department website, our boards. We could use social media. We thought maybe that our HR department, with their network, there might be some organizations that we could use to communicate this information. The Ames and the Nevada Chamber of Congress possibly to assist with this effort. So again, the goal is to, if interested, to put together this Complete Count Committee. The information that they provided suggests that individuals can come from a number of different areas, including county judges, mayors, childhood through 12th grade schools, media, social services, regional organizations, faith-based communities, college universities, nonprofits, hospitals, medical clinics, other governmental agencies. In the county, we could also potentially think about township trustees as being valuable in providing assistance and getting out the word. In our unincorporated villages, potentially business owners, mobile home park owners, managers, hospitals, school officials. They would like a letter to be sent to the regional director. Our department could help draft that letter with Deb, Sheldruff, the board staff, if you'd like that to be done. And then, of course, putting together the actual membership is key. And this is something that the liaison could probably provide assistance with devising a selection system, or the board could come up with, the system on who those members are, how you go about choosing those members. And then they're offering training, in-person or by webinar. And again, we think that the liaison could assist the board in putting together this training for this committee. So that just leads us to a motion. These could be separate motions, a motion altogether. Again, if there's interest in putting together this Complete Count Committee, they would like a letter drafted and sent to the regional director. They would like the board to put together a liaison, a contact for this committee to communicate with the offices at the U.S. Census, and then provide assistance in helping recruit for census positions, and then request training. So I'd be happy to answer questions.
Board members, any questions?
Dear, as I read through all this and reflected back on the part that we were able to hear from Mr. Cook, it seemed to me that the county overall had a pretty good response rate. It's when you get into the student areas especially. And so that it occurred to me that anything we do from a county standpoint should definitely be incorporated with Ames. So my first question is, have you had a chance to talk to Ames, or has Ames even brought this forward to the powers that be over there?
To be honest with you, I haven't had any discussions with Ames about this.
All right. How about Nevada? I see the 20.5%. Is that Nevada?
Yeah, some of that is, and again, these are census tracks. So some of that includes north Nevada and then the unincorporated property owners, dwellings in those areas. But I have not had discussions with either of the cities. But that's something that John suggested, that the board could work with the cities and put together a unified, or you could have an individual committee as well. So.
Yeah, so I would suggest that it's completely appropriate for us to spearhead the creation of this group. And my suggestion would be that our very capable board chair work with Jerry and Deb, and reach out specifically to mayors from Ames, Nevada, Huxley, and Story City to start to form the group. That's not to suggest that our smaller towns or the unincorporated area won't be represented. But I think when you look at the percentages up there on the board, if you can pull together those five entities, the four cities and the county, that you've got a heck of a good start toward creating something where we truly are reaching to everything. I think it's completely appropriate for Jerry, as our staff liaison, working with Deb, to facilitate that. But Linda, I think this is one of those areas that I believe the board chair leads us through this process. I think it's appropriate for us to do it. I don't know if it requires any kind of motion, but that's where I would like to see us go.
I think the one thing that probably requires a motion today is to appoint our liaison. And Jerry, you're already involved. Does, let me just, you know, let me just ask. Were you willing to take that on?
If the board would like me to, sure.
And other board members?
I don't have any problem with Jerry taking it on. I just know that his plate's a little full. So that's, you know, with downwind planner, but.
The way I understood it from, or I think I understood it from the part of the presentation we were at, is the liaison can be primarily the person who's their contact. And that doesn't mean Jerry has to do all the work. Is that?
I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
Be the point of contact with the census office.
And we've already talked about Deb being involved also. So I think, and pardon?
Right, and would you like the letter drafted also for the regional director? That it's your intent to form this committee?
Why don't we just direct staff, if that's okay, to write the letter? And I'd entertain a motion if it's okay with everybody for Jerry to be liaison.
And I just have one more question related to that, because there doesn't come a time, like writing the letter, all right? But there will come a time, I suspect, and there will be some actually work to be done, you know, kind of contact work or whatever. So then what you're saying is with Jerry as the liaison, and then Jerry to seek out additional help as needed from Deb or whomever.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, so I'll move Jerry as the liaison, creation of a letter with direction and leadership provided by Board Chair Linda Merkin.
I'll second.
Okay, you've been seconded. Any further discussion?
None.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye.
And then we'll just feed to one of you, just if we have suggestions for people who might be appropriate to be in on the team with it.
Okay, great.
Suggestions would be welcome. Okay, thank you. Anything else on that, Jerry?
That's it.
You're up next for a special event permit for Crushed Rock Classic. And Scott?
The race director is here.
Let's hear about it.
Scott Wall's the race director representing Ames Velo. He's requesting a special event permit. The board adopted the special events permit a couple of years ago, and we've got two this morning to talk about. This is a bike race planned for May 18, and the headquarters is at Sunny Heights Bed and Breakfast, 17641 Templeton Road. This shows you the approximate location, northeast of Ames, southeast of Gilbert, on Templeton Road, on the west side of the road, west of I-35, which is right here. County regulation on special events is in Chapter 83, and generally, it states that all applications are to be acted on by the board supervisors. It talks about sporting, music, activities, other events where they involve more than a four-hour period, and there's more than 250 event staff, participants, volunteers, and spectators. It calls for our department to be the coordinator. We are to communicate with the sheriff's office, fire chief. In this case, there's actually two different fire districts where the race course is. It involves the Gilbert Fire Department, Nevada Fire Department. Ambulance district is Mary Greeley, Environmental Health, Engineering Office, Conservation Office, Emergency Management, and other agencies. We did communicate with Ames City Administration and Gilbert City Administration. The race itself is 6.2 miles. It's multi-surface. It's about two and a half miles northeast of Ames, a mile and three-quarters east of Gilbert. Again, Sunny Heights Bed and Breakfast is the race headquarters. It's going to be the main gathering location. It also includes a parking area. They also have permission to park at Skunk River Access in Peterson Pits, located to the south of Sunny Heights. The course will include Templeton Road, 175th Street, 550th Avenue, 170th Street, 569th Avenue, through Underwood Farms property, through the Story County Conservation Board property, 180th Street, and then back to Templeton Road. All roads will remain open during the race, and motorists will be required to comply or obey with traffic laws. Start time is 12:00 p.m. Race will commence, or end, at about 2:30, followed by awards ceremony and a chili feed. There's a couple of vendors. Alluvial Brewing and Thirsty Pigs Mobile Event will provide beverages for participants at the activity. Sunny Heights will provide water. There will be portable toilets, first aid kit at the headquarters. All the race volunteers will have bright orange vests, cell phones, shortwave radios. Scott will be the person in charge of making weather-related calls, working with the USA Cycling officials. He will provide an insurance certificate, naming Sunny Heights, the county, and Underwood Farms. His process is he is required to get permission from the entity in charge of the permit before he can request the actual insurance certificate. I think he said it takes about four to five days to obtain that. This is the actual course. Again, Sunny Heights is the headquarters. This is where it will start. The race will run in a clockwise fashion. The red dots represent the corner marshals. The blue dots represent the portable toilets. Parking would be onsite, and then at the Skunk River Access, location on the east side of the road, and then on the south side of the road at Peterson Pits. Detail, the ordinance basically says, based on the zoning district, that they should attempt to try to meet setback requirements for tents, for vendors, any things like portable facilities. And so I've had discussions with Scott about that. We've got a condition built in that we'll do a review prior to the race to check on that. But this is basically showing a detail of the access, and he's showing where the portable toilets would be. Everything would be primarily on the east side of that existing large building. So we did communicate with those individuals that we cited. We had a meeting on the third, and had a representative from the sheriff's office, Environmental Health, county engineer was there, Scott was there, myself, had a pretty good discussion. County sheriff deputy indicated that, or stressed the importance of adding a volunteer on the north end of Templeton Road due to the site visibility and the curve. And Environmental Health suggested that at least two portable toilets be provided based on the numbers, and that one be handicapped accessible. Darren provided some input on parking. There was a request initially to park on Templeton Road, and that's going to be permitted on a temporary basis only to drop off equipment for the site, but it's not going to be permitted for permanent parking. Let's see, I provided input on the setback requirements. Also, provided information from Keith Morgan, Emergency Management. Again, he wanted to make sure that we had a person designated from the event staff that would make calls on weather, that they would have a phone or a device that would track radar. And Scott agreed to the communication that was provided to him, and said that he would accommodate that. So based on the process that we went through, based on the input from those that participated, we're recommending approval with these conditions. Scott and I've had discussion about them, and he's in agreement to them, that they provide a copy of the insurance certificate, that we get copies of the alcohol licenses from the vendors, and that we do a review of the site prior to the race. So that brings us to the option or alternative to recommending approval with those conditions. Do you have to ask your questions? And again, Scott's here.
Do you have anything to add?
I don't know, please, I think Jerry covered it pretty well. I would like to say this is the fourth year for this event.
Would you come for my mic, please?
So if it's not a new event, what's changed is the story county adopting the ordinance for special events. We don't really rise to the level it's in the ordinance, and we will not have 250 people involved. We would like to even, over time, we'll probably have, I mean, 150, 200 people, the participants, event staff, et cetera, spectators. But, one, that I work here, and two, for the services that Jerry provides as far as notification of residents around there and gather in all your offices to gather the sheriff and engineer, which I would have to contact on my own, if I did not go through the process, it just seemed to me to be reasonable to go through this process. So for this, the fourth year, but it's supposed to be a new event. We've never received any complaints, and I'm aware of, from the sheriff and the engineer, from residents, some of course, we've had support from some of us, and some of course, we're just excited to see people out there.
Well, it's awesome to have all the departments in the same room, and you can really get to the issues really quickly that way. So it's a good idea to do it.
One thing this did bring up, this there, was that the course does cross property owned by Underwood Farms. It's on the Story County Green Belt. It was been the assumption that Story County's got access to that, and you need to worry about the landowner. We couldn't find any evidence that Story County does have an agreement with Underwood Farms, even though that green belt's been in place for at least 30 years, probably more, probably because Bob Benning, the conservation director, at one time. So we are getting, I contacted Rogers through email, and he's agreed to the race pending an insurance certificate from us.
Interesting. And then I see Mike Cox sitting back there, so.
The same thing with the county, county has a reason in Story County that assuming we go forward today, then I'll apply for permit from USA Cycling, national governing body, and as soon as I get the insurance certificates, I will forward them to the county. and as soon as I get the insurance certificates, I will forward them to my chair.
I was wondering if maybe Mike has a conversation to have with Ms. Stronder, we're going forward about the green belt then.
Could be.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from board members?
Nope.
So this, Jerry, this is the first?
This is the first special event permit since the board passed this, so.
So it's, planning, zoning, spent a year on it?
We don't have the action.
Well, it's nice to get the feedback that it's actually helpful to an applicant, because that's one thing I remember we were worried about, is would that be onerous to an applicant? And so it's nice to know that it was seen as being helpful process.
We've had a lot of calls and inquiries into the ordinance, but this is the actual first application.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would so move that we approve the special event permit.
Second.
And that's alternative two with conditions.
Sorry, alternative two with conditions, that is correct, as sat by P and D.
Still second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Yes, thank you very much. And Jerry, again?
Yeah, sorry, me again.
But this is interesting. It's a little different than the normally, which come up and talk to us about.
This is where we have a new race director, Alex Silman, with True Time Racing Services for Multi-Sport, or Iowa Multi-Sport, requesting a special event permit for Ames Triathlon. This is a June 30 race that starts at Ada Hayden Park. Before Alex contacted our department, they've actually had a lot of communication with Ames Police, the Fire Department, the Parks and Rec Department, Sheriff's Department, our county engineer. So there's a lot of communication that took place. But because this race is a triathlon that includes, the biking portion is in the unincorporated area, we've got a special event permit for that portion of it. So triathlon includes swimming, biking, running. Again, it'll start at Ada Hayden Park. The bike race is mostly in the unincorporated, portions of it will be in the city. So here we are, Ada Hayden, down in this area, northeast Ames. Again, same regulation, Chapter 83, special event permit. When there's an activity that is over four hours in time period and involves more than 250 event staff, volunteers, participants, spectators are required to obtain a permit. They work through our department. We communicate with sheriff, fire chief, ambulance, environmental health, engineering, conservation, emergency management, other entities, in this case, communication took place with Ames Administration and City of Gilbert Administration. Again, there's a lot of communication occurring with the Ames Police Department, Fire, and Parks and Recreation Department. The swim portion of the race is a 500 meters. It starts at the boat ramp on the north side of Ada Hayden Park. They swim in a triangular fashion, clockwise. The bike portion is 15 miles. Roads that will be used are Highway 69, West Bloomington Road, north on George Washington Carver, west on Cameron School Road, north on 500th Avenue, east on 170th, south on George Washington Carver, east on 180th, and then south on Highway 69, again, back to the park. No roads will be closed. Motorists will be required to observe the traffic laws. The run portion will be a figure eight on the trail at the park, and that's 3.1 miles. So the Ames Police and the County Sheriff's Office will be stationed at the lake during the swim. Sergeant Quinn is the point of contact on this project, and she's the lead with the County Sheriff's Office for Public Safety. Will have about three to four deputies stationed throughout the actual bike portion at certain intersections, in addition to volunteers. All the race volunteers will have the bright orange vest and cell phones. Special signage will be provided. They include descriptions on direction arrows, ride right, information about railroad tracks, mile marker information, event in progress. They'll have ham radio operators assisting with communications. The applicant is the person that will monitor weather and make that decision if he needs to do that. Insurance information has been provided. We provided that to the county attorney's office, and they provided it to the insurance carrier, and they supported what was provided. This is the map of the bike race. The blue line represents the route. So you have Ada Hayden Park. They'll go to the south, west, northwest, north, east, southeast, and then south again to Highway 69. SCSO is the Story County Sheriff, deputies, that's where they'll be located. These represent volunteers, where they'll be stationed. There's information about the signs, which are the yellow dots. And then the church at Cameron School Road and George Washington Carver has agreed to be a safe place in case the weather is bad, as well as the fire station at Gilbert. This is the bike, or excuse me, this is the swim portion. Again, they'll swim in a clockwise fashion. It's a triangle shape on that northeast end of the lake. This is the run portion. It's a figure eight. They're following the trail system. So, and then this is the transitioning. Everything happens in this parking lot. It starts with the swim, and they go from the swim to the bike race, and then from the bike race, they go into the run. So we had a couple of meetings. One meeting was here with representatives from the Fire Department, representative from the Parks and Rec, the director was here, Darren, Story County Engineer, the applicant, myself. Again, we had a lot of good discussion. There was communication about the need to have all of the different responders be on the same channel, communication channel. There was a suggestion that the notice that we're going to prepare, that we send it out further than a quarter of a mile, so that we hit, or communicate with more of the rural property owners. The, let's see, there's some discussion about the sheriff's deputies, and, you know, where they should be located, and information about signage. Let's see, we, I also provided information from Keith Morgan again. He wanted to make sure that we had one person designated to make weather calls, and that that person monitor the weather on their cellphone or device early and often. So that was communicated. We had a special meeting with the sheriff's office, at the sheriff's office, with several representatives from the sheriff. The applicant was there, myself, and that's where all the details were worked out, as far as where the deputies would be located, where the volunteers should be located. Information was discussed about having electronic message sign on Highway 69. The DOT has indicated that they will provide that, to actually provide that communication to motorists for that added safety. Details about the actual dive team, when they would set up, be set up, where they would set up, a lot of details there. And, you know, in summary, I think it was very beneficial to have the representatives from the sheriff's department, and the applicant, and myself be in the same room to talk about these details. And I think for the most part, we got most of the issues ironed out. The applicant did agree to provide a detailed, final timeline and safety plan to Sergeant Quinn. Again, some of these details are still being worked out. They need to get approval from the city council to use a motorized boat on Ada Hayden Lake to allow the sheriff's department to use that, and the Fire Department with the city. And that's going to be something that will come up, I think, on the 23rd at city council. And again, I think for the most part, based on the information that was provided at those two meetings, we have, I think, a pretty good understanding of what is needed, and the applicant has been very good about responding to comments, questions, and concerns. And so that really leads us to somewhat of a condition to continue working with the commander at the City of Ames Police Department, to continue working with the director, Ames Parks and Rec, and to make sure that the communication is made available to Sergeant Quinn, since she's our contact in the county. And so that would be alternative number two with that one condition. And again, Alex, if you have specific questions?
Does the applicant have anything to add? If so, would you come up front?
Hi, so we have been putting on a race at Hickory Grove Park, actually, for the past 15 years. The lake is drained, so we can't swim there, which is why we've been looking at this venue. We did get permission from the Park and Rec Commission to swim in the lake. There isn't no swimming rule there otherwise. Trying to think, is there, are there any questions about the event that I can answer?
I'm interested in hearing, since you've staged at Hickory Grove for 15 years, and now you've had to switch here for this year. I'm interested in hearing how much more staging or work is being required at this location, and with our special event permit now, as opposed to when you staged at Hickory Grove?
There's, well, there's more involved this year. You know, it's been great working with Jerry. The notification tool that he has will be a big benefit for this race. And just, it's a great tool to let people know, we are more confined at Hickory Grove because the only paved roads around are around the park in itself contained. We had to do three loops there to get in our 15 miles. But the staging and the number of agencies and the level is much greater this year, and for this event. But, you know, luckily, there's a lot of, all the agencies have been really helpful in talking to each other, and it's been a good process.
Thank you.
We actually had discussion too about the next, because you want to do this next year, to have right away, get the county involved, or our department involved, in the early communication of it, which makes sense.
Rick, did you have any questions?
No, I'm ready to move alternative two.
Well, let me.
Yeah.
I have a couple of quick ones. Where are people going to park?
Yes, there's 109 parking spots available at the park. Some of those are going to be taken up for the transition area. We've secured permission from the three businesses directly across Grand Ave, or Highway 69, to do parking there. And we're looking at ways to get people and bikes across the road into the park, looking at some of the best practices, other events have utilized. And that parking is also been utilized for other events up in there.
And Jerry, is there any coordination needed with Boone County, since County Line Road is going to be on the route?
We haven't, did not, but we can certainly do that. This race isn't till June 30.
June 30, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Just a courtesy heads up, since they.
With their administration, sheriff's department.
Sheriff's Department, I would think.
We can do that.
Or you could talk to Bill Skerr, City Administration. But yeah, just a heads up for them, I think, would be a good thing. You said there's a, you were going to be able to get an electronic sign on Highway 69. I'm going to lobby for one on George Washington Carver. Just because there's as much traffic, even, it's a Saturday, I assume.
Sunday.
It's a Sunday. Church traffic, that'll be.
Yeah, we, the Plex, which is one of the facilities, we have a gymnasium there, and we've been in communication with them about if there's a weather incident using the gymnasium for shelter. They have a nine o'clock service. We estimate that the bikes, that's around mile four, the first biker will get there around 8:15, and if the bikers are the same speed and ability, and everything starts on time, you know, they would be past that intersection at 8:54 a.m. We also spoke with Wayne at the church, and he said that people arriving at the church normally arrive at 15 minutes before to 10 minutes after, was their heavy traffic time. He didn't anticipate any problems, and I explained to him our traffic plan, and they're going to let their Christianers know that the Sundays leading up to the event, they expect bikes on the road that day. He's not sure how they're going to do it, because they have different parts of the church, and it's not like, nobody's in one place, or they can make one announcement at one time to everybody. So they're working through the best way to do that, but it's something we're in communication with them about.
Good, okay. And I'm glad you brought that slide back up, because I want to see where you're going to have sheriff's deputies, and I think those are definitely the intersections that are going to be your problem ones with motorists.
There was a lot of discussion about that.
I bet there was. I won't belabor it then. I have nothing else, but I'm just curious. I'm sorry, Rick, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we approve alternative two.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Have fun. Thank you. Leanne Harder for discussion and consideration of watershed assessment implementation matrix and working group program.
This chair is low even for me.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I was getting a little nitpicky when preparing for today's meeting, so there are a couple spaces I needed to fix.
Okay, so this is not what was available to us. This is new stuff.
It's just a couple of spaces.
Got it.
There's nothing content in there whatsoever.
I got you. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What I'm going to do is share with you kind of what's been happening over the past few months in regards to the watershed assessments, and the report that was compiled. The presentation does go over some of the background, so feel free to stop me with any questions. And as I had just said, I handed out a revised copy of the draft matrix. It is, the changes are a couple of spaces here and there, and a couple of capitalization. Content is still the same, but when we get to that, I will share with the board the document that was on your agenda, how it is different than what was seen in December. I'll talk about that. Mike is in the audience. If you have any questions for him, as was Linda, and I think Jerry left, while I get to the membership too. As the board knows, the report was compiled by Emmons and Olivier Resources, and a couple years' worth of work. It was accepted by the board last August. What's up there is the chapter, but it's pretty detailed. But again, it was our homework to set the stage, so we knew where we were, so we could go forward from that point. They did take a step beyond just the assessment report, and provided staff and the board some recommendations on moving forward based on that homework. Those dealt with everything from ongoing monitoring to developing different types of ordinances and revisions to our regulations. Once the plan was adopted, or accepted by the board last August, the board directed staff to come together as a working group, internal working group, to meet during the fall of 2018, to discuss how do we take that assessment and actually put in some action steps on paper. That implementation matrix was then developed and presented to the board in December 2018. And then Story County Conservation requested a full-time position for a watershed coordination position in, through the budget work sessions. position in, through the budget work sessions this past January. With that, there was a direction from the board to reconvene the group. We thought we were done in December, so we had not been meeting. Reconvene the group with some change in membership, and that did include adding Supervisor Merkin, also Margaret James with Environmental Health. I'll get to how it's looking right now too later on. So we did begin meeting this spring and winter. We've had three meetings, February 21st, March 7th, and March 27th. We did receive an opinion from the county attorney's office that we are subject to open meetings laws of Chapter 21. So we are following such guidance and posting our agendas and keeping meeting notes as we are required to do so. One of our charges that we took on was looking at our group and seeing who was around the table, and we did discuss additions for others to bring to the table, and I'll get to that result here shortly. We also reviewed the implementation matrix from December in modified language, and I do have, I want to go over the changes with you briefly here in a couple of slides. We developed a goal statement, and then we came up with a game plan here forward. Not going to read this. It is the very first page of the goal statement, I mean, of the implementation matrix I just handed out, and that was on the agenda. We felt it was necessary to really, if you recall back in December, there are three or four headings on the top of the implementation matrix. This, in essence, replaces that. It sets forth a stage on foundation for the working group and the county to go forward. What you see as the implementation matrix today will ultimately be added as part of the implementation matrix for the C2C plan. So it kind of helps make that bridge that gap between the current matrix and these additions. But those four bullet points really are key in this goal statement, to communicate current and planned efforts, identify gaps, coordinate joint efforts, and communicate overall county efforts and recommendations to board supervisors. So this working group acts as that conduit to keep the momentum going, understanding leadership comes from the board. So the game plan has been going on now for several months. Board of Health received very similar, well, actually, all three entities thus far have received this very same presentation that I'm giving today. Board of Health, I did that on April 2nd, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission the following day, April 3rd. Mike presented to the Conservation Board on April 8th, and we're here, I'm here today presenting to you. We would like to suggest that formally, to the additional county staff members formally be added to the working group. That would be Scott Wall with Otter's Office, Keith Morgan with Emergency Management, and Darren Moon, our county engineer. Our current members, I kind of alluded to that, are down the bottom. It does also include Deb Shildroth from the Board of Supervisors. Otherwise, I noted all those.
Can you back up here? Where does it, did I just see ex officio by Linda Merkin?
Right.
How, did we do that up at the table here, or is that something?
We discussed that in the working group, and it's kind of the, you don't get two bites of the apple concept. Because anything that would come from the group would come in front of supervisors to vote on, so I shouldn't vote at the.
No, I, because that's where we were headed to on Board of Health and everything else. I just, it was new information to me.
We kept that down in the beginning.
So going forward, and actually, a couple of items. The first item, the first bullet points on your agenda today are, without giving away too much on that item, our priority for watershed quality, our water quality and quantity is not really up front and in people's faces when you go to our website. So we'd like to revamp the website. Also, prepare outreach materials and establish a timeframe and update, establish a review and update timeframe. We've decided we'll meet at least as a group quarterly, more if needed, and that's to make sure that we're all walking forward on this journey and making sure we're holding each other accountable for the action steps with which we've been tasked. And then amending the cornerstone to capstone will come later this spring and May. So what I quickly wanted to share with you is how this, other than the entire format, has changed since December. Obviously, it looks different because we have now embraced the concept and the branding of the C2C plan. It does include the goal statement. And then we did also build in the references to C2C plan. The one that was acted upon in December by the board, we hadn't made that bridge, or gone that far with it. Again, knowing that this becomes part of the C2C plan. What is different today from what is on your agenda, if you look on page four, the very bottom, when I PDFed this, the language on the very last notes cut off, and it just happened to, I happened to see it today. For some reason, PDFing from publisher does quirky things. On page five, under Action Step 2.1, we added the Board of Health as a responsible party. And under Action Step 2.2, we added the Planning and Zoning Commission. On the next page, page six, for 2.4, we added the Board of Supervisors in as a responsible party. And then 2.6, same addition, but also Planning and Development Staff. 2.7, A was, 2.7, the note was only, simply said what B says. Develop a cost share. Letter A there under the note is new. So we can develop a cost share, but we really don't know what that looks like. We need to take step A first. And then the responsible parties prior were the watershed management authorities. We replaced that with both Conservation Board and Board of Supervisors. Page seven, for Action Step 2.9, the Board of Health was added. And then in the notes section is where I saw some spacing issues, so I fixed that with the copy you have today. 2.10, we removed the watershed management authorities under the responsible parties. The board has representatives serving on those, so we felt it was redundant. Page nine, Action Step 2.15, is the only priority that we modified, or we are recommending modifying. It was a low priority, this is dealing with feedlot outreach. With this draft, it's a medium priority. On 2.16, the Board of Health was added as a responsible party. And then last, on page 10, under 3.1, we removed, there was an A and a B, we removed B. And B stated implement erosion control practices and water quality design elements. We're not quite there yet. We need to do the analysis, that was an A, before we can make that statement, is what we felt. And then, because a lot of people wanted it this way, the partners are organized via, or alphabetically.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. How were they before?
They were just random order.
All right, thank you.
Just, I think how we were coming up with them is how they were listed. But that really is the essence of the changes. Again, today's action is to accept it and then officially come back. The date is being modified again, unfortunately, but to amend the cornerstone to capstone later in May. Do you have any question? I think that's, oh, do you have any questions?
No, none. And so then, this will be available to us in electronic form then after the meeting. Great.
This will go on, on the website.
Okay. Thank you. I have no questions.
Do you guys have anything you want to add, Jerry and Mike?
Yeah, so I'd move approval of the watershed assessment implementation matrix with all the noted actions that go along with it.
I would second that discussion. I was just wondering, are we going to make a second to add people?
I think we'll probably need another motion as well.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to modify that.
Any discussion then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Olson? All in favor, excuse me. Merkin, aye. Let's do that.
I am all in favor, so that works out fine.
Well, good, we're glad to hear that. Now, do we need a motion to formally establish the group as an ongoing group and to add the other people?
I think that would be beneficial.
I would make a motion that we formally establish this group and call it the implementation, watershed implementation working group, and that the Scott Wall, Keith Morgan, Darren Moon, their positions be formally added to the working group.
Second, Matt Boyke.
Oh, yeah.
It's a question. It's a complete question. It just seems to me that we're to the point that having some GIS expertise could be beneficial, rather than, and I don't know if it would be you, but rather than you walking in there and secondhand relaying what we've got, might be beneficial to include him.
Yeah, I can, I've been having lots of discussions with him on different matters, and this is one, so I could see some benefit having him.
Jerry, Mike, do you have any thoughts about that?
There's merits to it, I would think.
I accept that amendment.
All right, so I'll second with the amendment. So that would include everybody that's listed, but also Matt.
Matt.
And then I'll discuss it with Matt and make sure it fits in his work program.
Subject to acceptance. Okay. Shelley, you got the motion? Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a question only.
And that is, who actually, Leanne, are you the spearheading this group? Are you the elected leader?
I am, I am the elected chair of the now watershed, or should be watershed implementation working group.
Okay.
We did hold elections at our last meeting, since we were informed that we needed to be a little bit more official in our meetings.
Okay, thank you. Yes, okay. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. Anything else then on this?
No, I'll be back.
I'm sure, yes, I'm sure you will. Okay, thank you very much, Leanne, for your leadership in this. And thank you, Jerry and Mike also, and everybody else who isn't here. Okay, we have no department reports. Lisa Markley for our FY '19 third quarter financial report. Good morning, Lisa.
Hi. So, we're in the process of amending the budget right now, but I thought I'd bring you the third quarter report where we sit as of the end of March, 75% of the year. As you can see, nine departments are over the 75% right now. But overall, total expenditures were only at 60, about 63% of the year. We have a big, I don't know if you noticed today, but you had a big claims run today.
Yes.
That's not included here. For the general, or for the fund status balances, we've used, or we have about 65% of our general fund has been year-to-date. At this point in time, there's, there's a lot of big projects yet coming out of the general fund, it looks like to me, and we are looking at amending about $500,000 worth of expenses into that with our budget amendment also, so. Mental health fund is rather odd, because we've only spent 13, 14% of the year. That, we get billed once a year for that large payment to Madison County, and that will be coming soon, so you will have that on the claims list soon also. Other than that, revenues, also 75% of the year, obviously. We've got 11 departments that are over that, and we've brought in like almost 90% of our revenues for the year, 86%, which is not unusual. March was tax collections, and the Treasury's office does an outstanding job of getting a lot of those posted. They'll be, the remaining taxes will be posted probably early in April. Any questions?
None.
Looks good. I mean, we're on track to have another good year.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public forum number, upcoming agenda items.
Oh, one more. Leanne, one more time.
Oh, the website. We're back, Leanne, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get us done before noon.
Love it, you can still do it. We can still do it.
Get a couple hard things, we'll get it done. Okay.
If the computer will agree, cooperate with me. My prayer was spelled out in the memo that was prepared for today's meeting. This is our website, and what the working group is requesting the board consider that this green button that says about Story County be replaced. Right now, you click on it, it goes to this county information, that we use this as an opportunity to put watershed information there, rather than requiring you to drill down where we, we'll maintain the others as well, but this will be your primary, primary source to get that information. I think this, these four items can be moved under our community. It's not balanced really well enough for me right now, so there's plenty of space to put in there. It's all stuff I can do with my administrative privileges, because I have the Illustrator and Adobe programs, I can actually play with this button a little bit. I don't know what it'll look like yet, and I don't know that, we might flip the colors of online payments, so we can have it blue, and make online payments green. So, I flip with that a little bit too, play with that. But it is, it does require action by the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
None.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, now, we're on to upcoming agenda items. Does anybody have anything to add to the list that we've been discussing?
Yeah, so I just want, I don't, I'm not adding anything. I just want to talk further about an item that's coming next week, because it, we're to the point where rubber is starting to meet the road, and this is Storycom. They'll present to us first thing next week, then they actually have a meeting down in the assessor's conference room as soon as they get done with us. We will have before us amending the 2080, so that will have to be amended by all four entities. But what we've run into now as we get near the end of the contract negotiations is, the contract is for 15 years, but we've only designated Storycom as an entity for a guaranteed 10 years. 10 years, and then renew, it automatically renews every year, but there's reluctance, an understandable reluctance, to sign a 15-year contract when you're only guaranteeing that the entity's going to last 10 years. So expect to see something, Ethan's working on it right now, for us to amend the 2080 from 10 to 15 years, no other changes in the 2080. And then finally, next week, in rough concept form, I will bring to you guys the idea of a grant for our smaller first responders to be able to access radios, and that grant would come out of, if approved, would come out of the $3 million that we borrowed. There's going to be some available funds there, and I'm not looking for a decision next week, but I'm looking to present it to you guys so that you can start considering the possibility of doing that. But anyway, so, that is one. It's time for us to be now fully aware, everything's starting to come together, but now we're up against, we're crunching up against it in terms of time. There's some work that has to be done on the ISU campus that can only be done prior to August 1st. We've got to get a contract signed so that we can get that work done, and so we're going to need to be moving pretty rapidly, and so look for that agenda item and those, those issues within that item.
So amending the 2080 will be an action item, and the other will be a discussion?
Yeah, so it'll be an update on Storycom, this is the way I'm visualizing right now. Update on Storycom, and probably within that update on Storycom, not even an agenda item, will be this 10,000-foot look at the possibility of us doing some grant funding for smaller first responders to help them acquire radios. It's something that we've talked about in passing a couple times, but I want to get it in front of us so that it can come back later as a decision. And then a separate agenda item will be the updating of the 2080 to take it from 10 to 15 years. That will also go in front of the Ames City Council that night. It has to go in front of Iowa State, their decision-making authority, and E911. Linda, I believe as vice chair of E911, you'll end up chairing a special meeting of them, because Paul will be on the road. because Paul will be on the road to do just that. But I just wanted you guys to be aware that all that was coming.
Okay.
I have just a question about that, just with, when you pointed out Linda would be chairing, are you going to, you're going to have Story County's vote also on that in the E911?
She's the alternate. When Paul's absent, she has the vote.
I understand. Here's where I'm headed. It just popped up when we were talking earlier about the working group, and you were an ex officio member, so do you end up, just the two votes? One for E911, one for the Board of Supervisors? So just wondering how that, but...
Yeah, I mean, we run into that from time to time. I appreciate that we're endeavoring to limit those kind of things happening. This is one of those cases where there was no foreseeable way to know that Paul Fitzgerald, who normally controlled that vote, would be on the road. Timing is going to be of the essence. So occasionally, Loris, I think we're going to have to deal with that. I think we're right to try not to do that wherever possible.
I agree.
This is unique circumstances, I see it.
Then, anything else on agenda items, Loris?
Just next week, I hope to actually now get it written, just to bring before you a very raw example of a press release to notify people that we have more special events money available. I think, though, that this really, what we're going to end up doing is giving directions to Leanne here, because I'm not, I think that we still have a couple of things to talk to at the table, because, and that's why I didn't hand it to her already, is because I don't know what to tell her. Normally, a press release gives a deadline, gives some other thing. So I think we're going to have a little discussion about that, is what it's going to be. But that's a minor item. It's just something we should probably, we're getting close to next year, fiscal year '20, when there is some additional money will start to be available for groups. They need to know how to apply for it.
So your intent is to draft, to address drafts, I can't say it, draft a press release in order to facilitate, start discussion?
Yes, and I hate, Leanne, I hate to call it a press release at this point, since we have no deadlines on this, no rules or whatever, so...
Just call it a draft.
Yeah, we'll call it a draft, okay? And, but really, it's a discussion then for direction to go forward. You and I can talk about it afterwards, if that works. Okay.
Thanks.
I mean, after this meeting today, not after.
Okay, now, we'll move on to public forum number two. Are there any members of the public who would like to make comments? Anything not on the agenda? Who can't act on it, but, yes?
I would like to just shout out a congratulations from last Thursday to the Ames Seed Capital that won an award down at the Prometheus Awards, which are the Iowa Technology Awards, Association Awards, and the Ames Seed Capital Group Fund won for being, what exactly was it called?
Impact of the Year.
Yes, Impact of the Year Award. And it was quite impressive. Also, Ron Hallenbeck, who has been doing the Seed Capital for several years and is retiring. But also, I'm sitting in a room with maybe 600 people, do you think, that were there? And to know that Ames has put together, and this is 20 years old, the Seed Capital Corporation at least, I believe, put together a group of local people to invest in local companies and has truly made a difference with some of these companies now coming to fruition and yielding results and continuing to grow. And also, congratulations to, I think we had three or four different companies who won various awards. Grosswind won a technology award, which I'm still looking forward to seeing that technology. I think, Rick, you've seen it in action. But I left quite proud to be from Story County. I know I haven't had a great deal to do with any of it, but I left proud to know that there were that type of entrepreneurs and that type of people who are all working together in an area that we don't usually get to see, because some of these projects and some of these companies were doing things that we, most of us, would never interact with. They were, A, we had an agricultural software company that won. So I just want to say once again, congratulations to everybody who won or who was even nominated.
Yeah, and so I think I would just piggyback on that, Loris, to thank you for going down and representing Story County there. You're 100% right. I mean, so we definitely outpunch our weight class in terms of, if you look at per capita, the kind of things that happen out of Ames, and there's so many different entities that deserve the credit. But I appreciate you calling it out. The growth of the Seed Capital Fund under Ron Hallenbeck, who now has retired, under his, under his leadership, has been nothing short of miraculous, but it's so much more than that. And I just really appreciate you being in the middle of that and being part of that evening. Thank you.
And do either of you have any liaison assignment, committee meeting updates, or other announcements?
Pass.
Pass.
Okay, I also pass.
Moving adjourned.
At 11:55, we are adjourned.
Outstanding.